Welcome. Call to order. School Board meeting is underway. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everybody's information, Dr. Gupta is not available for us tonight, so I'm acting as Chair and Vice Chair. So be patient with me if I get something out of order. Appreciate you. First thing we have on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Second.
Ms. Day, can you take the move?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Olene?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is some Chair comments. And then I think the Superintendent would like to make some comments about... Are you before me or after me?
Before you, about 9/11.
Okay. I'll turn it over to our Superintendent.
All right. Good evening. On Thursday, our schools came together to recognize Patriot Day in meaningful ways. Across the division, our students and staff engaged in classroom activities, reflective ceremonies, songs, poems, and other tributes. And these moments gave us the opportunity to pause, remember, and honor. As a community, we paid tribute to the lives lost on September 11th, 2001, and reflected on the courage and selflessness shown by so many. We've remembered the first responders, service members, and everyday citizens who risked their own lives to help others. Their example reminds us of the strength found in unity, compassion, and service. I'm grateful for the way that our schools honored this day, ensuring that our students understand both the history and the spirit of resilience that continues to shape our nation. And together, we carry forward the responsibility of remembering and teaching future generations the values of courage, sacrifice, and hope. So at this time, I'm just gonna play a short video, just to give you all a snapshot of what occurred that day. Ms. Journey, are we ready? Okay. So it should come up shortly. If not, if you don't mind, Mr. Connor, if you could continue, and when they have it ready, we'll play that. I apologize for the technical difficulty.
I just have a few words to say on behalf of Dr. Gupta as far as Chair comments. And one thing I wanna say is, it doesn't really seem like it, but our Superintendent has been in position now for less than three months. It hasn't even been 90 days. She hasn't had her 90-day evaluation yet, and yet she's accomplished so very, very much. So, and I know the community wants to see things happen fast. And I want quality over speed. And sometimes it takes time to get the data, then develop a plan, then implement the plan. And I think we're in the... We're still in the data gathering portion of her tenure, not only... But not just the data gathering, but we're putting together, I see several plans being initiated to bring about change, to bring about improvement in our schools, in our academics, and those type of things. So I'm just asking that, you know, we all understand that it's gonna take some time to see the results that we wanna see, especially in our SOL scores in our, you know, in our schools, even in our CIP things that we've been dealing with in the Finance and Facilities Committee. So just asking for some patience, that we show some. We want quality, and we want results, but we also need to show a level of patience to make sure we get where we wanna get. Are we ready? Okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Connor, so that we don't belabor the point, because I know there's a lot that we have to cover tonight, and I'm sure Austin and team can hear me, if you don't mind, the video can go during my comments later. Is that okay? I just don't wanna hold anyone up.
Next thing on our agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy BDDH, Public Participation, members of the community are invited and encouraged to attend meetings of the Lynchburg City School Board to observe its deliberations. Any member of the community may address the Board on matters related to the Lynchburg City Public Schools at any regular meeting. Persons or groups wishing to address the School Board may do so by choosing one of the following: leave a voice message on the School Board Clerk's line. Messages will be played during the public comment of the School Board meeting. Address the Board in person during the public meeting. Persons desiring to address the School Board by voicemail message shall submit the voicemail to the School Board Clerk no later than 3:30 p.m. on the day of the Board meeting. Persons desiring to address the School Board in person shall contact the Clerk of the School Board no later than 3:30 p.m. on the day of the Board meeting or by signing the public comment form which shall be available to the public 15 minutes prior before the meeting starts. Each person requesting to speak shall identify the subject they want to address, and if the speaker represents a group, the speaker must identify the group. Persons appearing before the School Board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, or intimidates others, or address the School Board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the School Board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at School Board meetings is 30 minutes. Voicemail messages to be played are also limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for speakers representing a group. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voicemail message in the following order: students, staff, parents, guardians, community members. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The Board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. The Chair is responsible for orderly conduct of the meeting and rules on such matters as the appropriateness of the subject being presented and the length of time for such presentation. No one will be allowed to make additional presentations until everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to make an initial presentation. And tonight, we have two speakers. We have Mr. Robert Flood, who represents the Group Rescuers of the Youth, and we have Ms. Kelly Knapp, representing the YMCA. At this time, Mr. Flood, you can come to the podium.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for letting me speak once again, Superintendent and School Board members. Two topics that I wanted to speak about, I heard Mr. Connor say about, just be patient about the scores that we've been talking about maybe 10 years or longer, and I understand, you know, sometimes you have to be patient and make things work. But Mr. McCain been talking about this for 25 years, and I think that we need to try to figure out what the solution is, because we already know what the problem is. And the second thing is, I was on the football field at Lincoln Middle School last week. They were playing Jefferson Forest. And I realized that every school, I know, football's been part of my life, you know, sports. And I realized that during the game, that a kid got hurt. And for some reason, the middle school do not have a trainer. And I don't know if y'all got money allocated to have a trainer, you would get the fire department to be over there for at least a couple hours, because I think about last year when Buffalo played somebody, and it was a young man that was playing defense, and he tackled somebody and almost lost his life. Through the grace of God, he made it through. These are young kids that they don't have no idea that all it takes is one hit, and their life is over. And we don't have a trainer, but I think it's something that we can look into. If not a trainer, if we can get somebody just to be over there for a couple hours, not only Lincoln Middle School, any middle school that got a football team. Because right now, if you don't have a trainer, just like the high school do, somebody get hurt. Although I'm certified in some different fields with CPR and a few other things, but we need somebody professional to know what to do if something happened, you know, seriously, because these kids, you know, you know, when you see them playing, they're having fun, they're enjoying themselves, but sometimes hits, you look at them, you, you know, all it takes is one. And if y'all could just look at it, and hopefully, you know, y'all can come, come up with something that we can have somebody on that football field for maybe a couple hours, I think it's like eight-hour quarters, and it's over, and maybe hour and a half, just in case something happened. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Kelly Knapp, representing the YMCA.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board today. My name is Kelly Knapp, and I am the Director of Youth Educational Programs for the YMCA of Central Virginia. And the YMCA has had a very longstanding relationship and collaborative partnership with Lynchburg City Schools, which is wonderful. We've been hoping to continue to address the achievement gap. Some of you have had the opportunity to tour our Power Scholars Academy, so that's what I wanna speak to you about today, because the impacts are profound. We both share the common goal of addressing and attempting to mitigate opportunity gaps students are experiencing due to low academic performance and the lack of enrichment opportunities outside of school time. Current research does estimate that approximately seven and a half million students come from under-resourced communities and are performing significantly below grade level. These children need great schools. They need high-quality opportunities outside of school to help them achieve their full potential. Research also established low-income children are more likely to experience the loss of academic skills over the summer than their higher-income peers, often due to the lack of access to a structured program. These losses are cumulative, and they can account for up to two-thirds of the academic achievement gap. That also will lend itself to these students may not reach graduation. This persistent performance disparity is a critical issue for educators and communities across the country, and Lynchburg and the surrounding counties by no means are immune to this learning disparity. High-quality out-of-school time opportunity is crucial in moving the academic achievement needle forward. Through Power Scholars Academy, this summer, students in grades K through 5 were provided with four weeks of full-day academic and enrichment activities that focus on reading, math, social-emotional learning, physical fitness, STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math enrichment. Students are invited to attend through recommendations of their teachers and administrators, and their recommendation is data-driven. It is based on below-level reading and math performance. A curriculum that's aligned with both the Virginia SOLs and the Science of Reading is curated for this program, and it's designed to stem learning loss, motivate our struggling scholars, and build foundational skills in literacy and math. It is delivered by certified teachers to ensure high-quality learning is occurring in the classroom. Students do receive 90 minutes of literacy and math instruction. Small-group instruction is provided daily, and it is data-driven using a pre-test so that we can basically drill down to the core skills that these students need. Students are also provided with various enrichment activities in the afternoon that create a holistic approach to the program. Academic growth is measured through a pre- and post-test, and additional feedback is provided by our families and by our students and our staff that are hired to perform surveys where we get a data impact report. This impact report is available to the community once the results are gathered. We monitor attendance daily, and we do follow up on calls to make sure there are no barriers preventing our students from attending the program. We also engage our families in a family event at the end of the program. There is no cost for any child to attend. The partnership is the YMCA brings the program, pieces of the academics, Lynchburg City Schools provides the buildings, staffing, transportation, so it's a wonderful collaborative effort on all of our parts. I stand before you now, excited to share the impact report from the summer of 2025. 398 scholars attended the Power Scholars Program at R.S. Payne and Heritage Elementary School sites. On average, they made academic gains of three-plus months in 19 short days. Average daily attendance was 77%, and 100% of our families felt valued as partners in their children's learning, and they felt the program was welcoming and open. 91% of the students surveyed felt that the program increased their confidence and ability to learn. Students who participated, having made academic gains in the summer, returned to the classroom this fall with new skills and newfound confidences. The YMCA would love the opportunity to continue working on the mission with Lynchburg City Schools and to continue to address the achievement gap. It is this valuable partnership that provides the opportunity for students, educators, and families to see the importance of that holistic learning approach. With these continued efforts, we can collaboratively work together to decrease the achievement gap. I look forward to another year of Power Scholars next summer, and I do have the impact report to share with all the Board members.
May I ask you a question? So I invited you to the Academic Success Committee, does that take place from this? I sent you an email?
Yeah, yes, but no, I also would like to meet with the committee.
Okay, all right, all right. And my second question is, is there a limit number of students where it's a cutoff?
As far as the number that we can serve, this year, the goal was to serve 500, and we enrolled a little over 400, so with like, some of the students who did not come for various reasons, we ended up serving 398. So the growth of the program is basically up to the funding sources.
Okay.
So we are happy to serve as many as we can. One year with Lynchburg City and Amherst County Public Schools, we served over 890 students.
Wow.
So it's open to growing. I think this is our ninth year with Lynchburg City Schools doing Power Scholars Academy, so, you know, we are more than happy to let it keep growing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp.
Thank you. Who should I leave the reports with? Thank you again for your time.
Next thing on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Olene?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next thing on our agenda is our finance report.
All right. Good evening, Vice Chair and Chair for the night, Connor, members of the School Board, and Dr. Majet. You have before you the August 31st, 2025 month-end financials. We are now on schedule to receive financial statements within 15 days of the month-end closing, so that's gonna put us in a better position to make financial decisions more quickly in the future. As of August, which marks 16.67% of the year passing already, believe it or not, the percent of revenues collected versus original appropriation is at 7.8%. The amount of expenditures versus original appropriation is 12.96% year-to-date. Total expenditures inclusive of encumbrances, those items that we have promised to pay in the future, is at 81.38%. So I have a few notable variances for you this month in function 1320, Media Library Services salaries, and your variances are those items that are 100% or greater percentage-wise of spent funds. It, the Media Library Services has used 102.34% of its budgeted amount due to encumbrances associated with payroll. And I will say, when this report was pulled, we had encumbrances for payroll, but payroll had already hit. I tried to pull this report as close to the 15-day mark to get as many expenditures in, so your payroll is slightly overstated, because that payroll is in encumbrances and has hit actual as well, so those encumbrances have been marked off as of this point. Function 2220, Health Services, Purchased Services, has used 224.49% of its budget due to encumbrances related to Medicaid service fees. As the year, as the months tick off in the fiscal year, these outstanding elevated ratios... As the year, as the months tick off in the fiscal year, these outstanding elevated ratios will decrease in accordance with the time of, timing of the year. Function 3200, Vehicle Operations Services, Purchased Services, has used a hundred point eight-nine percent of its budget due to encumbrances related to EverDriven Technologies. As you're aware, EverDriven Technologies is the company that we use to transport our special students to places that can't be on school buses. Function 4200, Building Services, Purchased Services, has used a hundred point nine-eight percent of its budget due to encumbrances associated with facility upgrades out at the schools. Function 4600, Security Services Salaries, has used a hundred and eighty-two point seven percent of its budget due to encumbrances associated with campus safety salaries. So this line is reimbursed through DCJS, so that number will drop in the future as grant reimbursement comes down to make that go away. Function 4700, Warehousing and District Services, Salaries and Employee Benefits, has used two seven, 276.93 and 286.44 respectively. Those are expenses associated with overtime for facilities employees, however, those budget lines are really small, so any amount of money on that is going to have a ratio that's much larger, and that I anticipate will balance out as the months, the ratio months extend out. Function 6200, Site Improvement, Salaries and Employees, same with this. It has spent 280.32 percent and 527.5 percent of its budget due to expenses associated with construction management. This line is reimbursed for, by the city of Lynchburg for CIP items, so I anticipate these ratios will drop as well. Statement of Revenue, the total amount of revenues received year-to-date is nine million two hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-three cents, or seven point eight zero of allocations. Of that total, state revenue is equated to eleven point eight-four percent, federal equated to sixteen point four-three percent, and local, we are anticipating our allocation from the city any day. Miscellaneous and charges for service collection rates are at six point eight-four and thirty-one point five-five respectively. So our charges for services is, their ratio is bringing in some, some revenue. So just like last report, we, our summary report of insurance, we're, we were waiting on the lag report from Anthem, we received that yesterday, so the beginning balance is a little high. We were waiting on that reporting in order to recalculate that, get that to the auditors and recalculate the beginning balance. So that hasn't changed from the last report, but as of August, LCS has received fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents more in receipts than we paid out in disbursement. So that's, that's kind of the area we want to be. We don't want to be making too much money off of the withholdings, but we also want to make enough to pay for the injuries or the illnesses that, that are happening. So that's all I have for my report this evening, and I will entertain any questions that you have at this time.
I have one.
Okay, yes, sir.
You gave us the, the lines that were, what's our bottom line?
Um, your, so your bottom line?
Eighty-one point three?
Uh, is, with encumbrances, yes, sir, that's the eighty-one percent.
Okay.
Um, and that includes contracts, that includes, we have to front-load all of our insurance payments and everything at the beginning of the year, so that ticks off as, as the year proceeds, so, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Could you give us a little background on the percentage that the city actually gives? I know we're getting a lump sum, but how does that break down in terms of percentage?
So the percentages of, of total revenues?
Right.
Um, that is, so that, their allocation this year is forty-two million, and our total revenue allocation is a hundred and nineteen million and some change, so it, it's about, just real quick math, maybe thirty-five percent of our, our total revenues, so that's generally what we got, we have. And then we have, we have our federal and our state funding lines, and then our grant funding lines that offset expenses as well.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Our next agenda item is Special Education Advisory Board Committee listing. It's Ashley Burks.
Hello. Good evening, school board. It's a pleasure to be able to speak to you for today, so I am standing in front of you to just discuss the Special Education Advisory Committee. So that is the form that you all have before you that lists members of the committee that represent every school. For the, myself and my supervisors that are also listed on there, we're not official members, we just help facilitate whatever that they need throughout the school year, so their role is to advocate for students with disabilities, help be able to create engaging events, like we had a wonderful sped engagement family night last year. I know that this year, we're looking at a trick, trick or treat for October, and so they are able to bring in community members, agencies, a transition fair that is coming up soon, and so it's really just a great way for our parents and our community members to be able to bridge together with Lynchburg City Schools Special Education Department to be able to facilitate needs and advocate for our students and to have programs. They also do a really great job of, within their own school buildings, being able to communicate with the admin there on what does your school need to be able to best support students with disabilities. So those parents might say, hey, do I have the programs in which my child can be able to have read aloud? Is the playground acceptable for my child with disabilities? And so being able to come together as a whole and be able to advocate to ensure that our students have what they need in order to be successful for the day. Are there any questions about CAC?
Ms. Burks, do you, is this just for information for, for the board?
Yes, so the, the form that you have before you all is the list of the members that has to go before the school board. At the bottom of there is listed the dates in which they are meeting throughout the school year, so it has to be presented to you all per mandate of regulation.
No, I'm asking, do they need to vote on it, or you're just informing them of it?
Typically, that you guys, that is whatever the school board does, in order to?
It is up for action.
Okay. Yes.
Okay.
Well, I don't see the list, that's what I'm looking.
It's, yeah, so it should be listed on there. Yes, sir.
I'm just lazy. We have a motion to? Can I move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are there any changes from last year?
Uh, yeah, so some of the staff members are, some of the committee members that are on there are different. It's a requirement that they rotate out, just because our population changes and the families change, and just make sure that we are moving forth with any regulations or, or policies. Special education constantly changes, so those members change, but in regards to how the CAC functions, that is particularly, remains the same. It's their, just their job to make sure that, what can we do to kind of help support our students, make sure that they meet quarterly and just review any priorities and strategies that need to be looked at for the year in regard to be able to support our students. So no major changes, but they really help be able to facilitate our community members. A lot of times, when you have students with disabilities, unless you are the parent of one, or you're the teacher of, of a child with disabilities, a lot of people are unaware of the needs that go with that, and so that is really their job. They help us bridge that gap with the community and our school.
Have there been any gaps in their services you've come across, or are you fully satisfied with their services?
Um, I'm fully satisfied with their services. We're able to collaborate, and like I said, we are able to collaborate with those events. The committee members that we have had in the past are really just fantastic, they, and they have a great listening ear, and they really put forth a lot of energy into being sure that we are doing what that, what we need for students, and then asking the questions from that community perspective that for the, those of us that are in the school may not think of. So if there's any way that we're able to help and be able to see something from that parent perspective, it's really great. So there are mandates for the committee members. You can't come in and just specifically advocate for your child or discuss like an IEP issue or anything like that. It's just more overall of what can we do to help support Lynchburg City Schools and be able to support the students that we as staff serve.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
So you have one vacancy, Darrington?
Yeah, so the schools, if there is a TBD on there, they are able to join later. Darrington is, is a much smaller school, and so therefore, the sped population is lower there, so they're doing their best to try to reach out and find a parent that wants to be able to connect and join that committee, because it does take time to be able to join the meetings throughout the year and to be able to join those, so those events, so because there is a time commitment, we understand that when you're the parent and you have a child with disabilities and then be able to throw something else onto your plate can be a lot, but we are working with that school to add another committee.
Any other discussion? So, so the parent has to be from that school, or is that, could that be a shared commitment?
Yes, they do have to be at that school. And that's why we have a representation at every school.
We have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Mr. Barron and Ms. Laurie.
Okay. There are no other comments, then we'll take the vote.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Alene?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing on our agenda, which is an information item, is the LCS Education Foundation. Ms. Dawn Wise. Dawn Wise, I mean. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to have time to talk to you about all of the great things that the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation is doing. We do have a really brief presentation, and I'm also going to have Whitney Boyd join me midway, so she can update you about a really exciting opportunity that we have to go ahead and adopt Partners in Education. So we'll move forward with our presentation. Briefly, our mission is to advance excellence and equity in the Lynchburg City Schools through advocacy and educational funding. We have been in existence since 1985, so we just celebrated our fortieth year, and our whole goal is to stand in the gap where Lynchburg City Schools budget, the public revenues allow. So we essentially, when there's not revenue line item that is allowed for in the Lynchburg City Schools budget, that's where we step in and hopefully be able to help out with that. Go to the next slide. And so, once I just mentioned that, we can go to the next slide as well. Our loudest program is probably our classroom innovation grants. We just celebrated our 33rd year of awarding classroom grants to teachers. Teachers at Lynchburg City School, or anyone who is curriculum-facing, can apply for grants up to $5,000 for things that are not in their budget, for really innovative programs in their classroom. So some examples, last year is we had a drum line at RS Payne, which encouraged student engagement. So we award between $60,000 and $80,000 a year, and they are all from community sponsors like Bank of the James or BWX, and they all sponsor these grants. If you have the next slide? Our next, probably biggest program, especially this time of year, is our Tools for Schools Warehouse, and that is also something that's been around for 25 years. And there's actually, in a warehouse, that is the Facilities and Maintenance Warehouse off of John Capin Road, we have a tiny little spot that Lynchburg City Schools allows us to have there, and we operate out of that, and we have lots and lots of school supplies that teachers can shop for at no cost. They get a certain amount of points per month that they can shop there, and they can also use the online ordering tool 24 hours a day. And our wonderful Facilities and Maintenance Crew helps deliver those items, so we could not do that program without that group. Okay, the next slide. Another thing that's really important that a lot of people don't know about that we do each year is our Back to School Supply Project, and that is for students. Each year, right around March, we end up coordinating with the counselors at every single school, from Hutcheson all the way to the high schools and even the alternative schools, and they let us know a certain amount of kids they think are going to need school supplies. So our wonderful Director of Operations, Tracy Baker, coordinates with that. Again, the Facilities and Maintenance Crew helps deliver those, and they all get delivered in May, so the counselors have those in the summer for kids and parents that need school supplies, and so every kid that needs them will be able to start the school day, the next school year. And we deliver about a thousand different, we identify about 1,000 kids, which is great. Okay. We also do a lot of great scholarships. Our biggest ones, we have a 15 and a $16,000 scholarship, $15,000 for our newly-established Computer Science Scholarship, and then a $16,000 to $20,000, depending on how many sponsors we get, of our Excellence in Science. It's a really unique flagship scholarships that other school divisions do not have that really helps separate us from other school divisions. And then what we'll all be talking about soon is our Breakfast with the Superintendent. It's a huge event. We have over 400 community members that attend. It's our big fundraiser. The Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation is solely privately funded by donors and sponsors and grants that we receive, so that's a big event that we have, and we usually have our wonderful superintendent that will have remarks, and we'll coordinate with that very soon. We'll leave you alone for a little bit. So the main reason I'm here tonight, too, and we have lots of other great events, too, please visit our website. We have a new website. We used to be hosted on the Lynchburg City Schools site. We decided to kind of branch out our own, kind of distinguish ourselves. We still get a lot of support from the LCS Communications Department, but we have our own website now. It's lcsfoundation.org, pretty easy to remember. And our big, exciting news is that we coordinated with the Lynchburg City Schools Administration over the past couple of years, and the Partners in Education Board of Directors, which is now an advisory board, and we decided we really wanted this amazing program that's been in existence for about 30-plus years, that was a joint initiative between Lynchburg City Schools and the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, formerly the Chamber, that we wanted to make it as sustainable as possible. We were very worried, all of us, Lynchburg City Schools Administration, previous superintendents, and we were worried about it being cut from the budget, and it's an incredible program that we never wanted that to happen, so we all collaborated and decided we would include it in our budget from now on, and it will be adopted under the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. And I will invite Whitney Boyd?
Thank you. To talk a little bit more. I'm rushing.
All right, well, good evening, Dr. Majet and school board. So my name is Whitney Boyd. I am the Coordinator of Family and Community Engagement for Lynchburg City Schools, and then I also double as a School Counselor for Virtual Virginia. So oftentimes, people ask, what is Partners in Education, and that is a very loaded question, so I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can. So one of the biggest initiatives we have, and behind you, as you can see, so that's the new website, or the new page that we have underneath the Lynchburg Education Foundation. The bottom right-hand corner of the Teacher Resources is new, and that's something that I'm very excited about, and that kind of just captures many of the different components that is underneath the umbrella of what Partners in Education does. And so we oversee volunteers that want to come in and support the schools in various ways. Of course, you know that we have reading initiatives and all types of fun programs that the school levels will do for students, and so getting, supporting them with getting those types of incentives. Event support, so that includes family engagement type of events, career fairs, all, and you guys know how busy the schools get during the school year, so all the various events that they have, and then sponsorships. And so it could be in-kind donations, it could be items of some, of some sort, but we do have sponsors that actually give us monetary donations for various different things. We also recently- also recently, basic needs was something that when I came on board was a, was a very big, I don't want to say a void, but there, there were gaps kind of when it came to meeting those needs at the school level. And so what we were able to do, and my supervisor, Austin, has been super awesome with allowing us to adopt Care Portal. That actually comes through a partnership that we already have with an existing organization. And essentially, very short summary, is Lynchburg City Schools is in this platform as requesters, and then the community, Lynchburg City as a whole, are in the same platform as responders. So what happens is there's one person in every building, including all ed sites, that can submit requests out. It gets approved, and then that basically kicks it out to about forty or fifty different churches, community groups, anybody that you can name. And if they're able to fulfill that request, then the school itself is the drop-off site. So we're not showing up to families' houses, we're not pulling kids out of class. It's two adults, you know, having that communication, making that happen, and then the schools are able to get the things that they need. We also with partnerships, so, well, that's kind of was on the, on the website. So you've got some that come in and want to do programmatic type of things, so mentoring, tutoring, reading buddies, lunch buddies, and then we have some that are just strictly in a sponsorship capacity. We do local events, so of course you guys, most of all of you were at our Back to School in August, so that's one of the big ones that we have. We have our own breakfast as well. We oversee volunteers and flyer distribution. And yeah, that was the exciting news. So we were able to be adopted by the Ed Foundation. That was really for more of the sustainability component, as she said, and we didn't want this program to be based off an individual person or just who was in that role. We wanted to, you know, live on and do all the wonderful things.
And I just want to quickly add, when I first came on in 2022, the very first thing that we heard, and I heard from Whitney, Whitney really has champion in this, so she really should be applauded, was the emergence of hygiene poverty. And that's something you're going to hear a lot more about, kids in our school who are coming to school without, you know, basic undergarments. And we hear a lot about food, but the hygiene poverty, hair products. And I was like, you need hair products? And it just became the snowball effect. So we're also starting a hygiene poverty fund that falls under Partners in Education. So even though we're doing these great partnership connections that don't cost anything, the businesses come in, the nonprofits come in, they really make this happen without it being a monetary thing, we really want to address that and meet those needs as possible, as quickly as possible. So we're, we'll be talking more about that, too, and that will fall under Partners in Education. So, and we're working with each of the schools to coordinate with that. Any questions?
I have two questions. Is this part of the Lynchburg food truck, too? Or is that something different?
No, that's CTE.
Okay, all right. And then my other thing was, I know I helped one summer with Parkview Mission to get those hygiene things out. Is that one of the partners doing it?
Yep. Yeah, that's one of the, and you can talk to that, because I deleted that slide.
One of the cool things about the hygiene is it works in conjunction with the weekend food bags that the schools already get anyway. And so basically, what we have done on the back end is I have many groups of people that help me do all of the things. And so our nurses basically will identify how many they need. There's different types of kits that they can get. And so basically, what will happen is they, hey, I need X amount of kits of this type. Well, it comes on the same day that the weekend food bags come. So the students get the meals for the weekend, and then the nurses in the buildings get the hygiene products they need as well.
And what we're trying to do is, you know, we coordinated with Parkview before we even started this. I had a great conversation with Todd Blake, and those are hygiene items that are going home to the families with the kids. We are really trying to also not duplicate those efforts in addressing the kids that are coming to school without those items. So we immediately allow them, the counselors or whoever they need to talk to can go and, here, go grab some deodorant, or, you know, do you need a clean something or another, or are you cold? So they don't have to wait until the weekend. That, having those, working together to make sure all the days are covered is what we're really trying to do. So we definitely don't want to duplicate any efforts.
Appreciate everything you're doing, both of you.
Mr. Jalil?
Great work with this Care Portal project. My question is for the warehouse. I would like to know, is there a cap on the number of times a teacher can go to the warehouse in a month, and can they get one armful of supplies or two?
Great, great question. So they get a hundred points a month, and when you go to the warehouse, there are different items that are sort of the more hot items, I guess. So, you know, a glue stick might be, you know, one point or something like that. That's kind of an overkill, but, and so, but then there are items that aren't as popular in demand that they can have as much as they want. We had a whole bunch of leather scraps that were donated, and Kim Hansen went in there one day, and she's, I want to take this whole box. We're like, take it, you can have as many as you want. So it really depends on what the supply is. Some, we wish we had a lot more, we're trying to get more school supplies. So it really depends on that. Now, there are special requests we receive. So if the teacher gets a hundred points a month, they spend it, they have to wait to come back. And there are things they can have dozens and dozens of. It doesn't have points attached. There are special requests we get in where there was a science teacher who needed pencil pouches, and his points were not going to cover that. It was beginning of the year, we knew he needed it, and we made the exception. So it's kind of a case by case, but usually it's, it's that. And there is a gap. There's never enough school supplies for these teachers. They're not only, they're really trying to mitigate their out-of-pocket expenses. These teachers are spending $400 to $600 on school supplies, and that's a low estimate. So we're trying to make that zero as much as possible.
Sounds like a line item for the Care Portal.
For school supplies?
So Care Portal is a very specific type of request, but then again, that where the sponsorship is was on the website. That's kind of will be another avenue where those kind of alternate requests can kind of come through, and we can get those things as well. And I talk to community folks probably daily. So usually, like, oh, we need X. I'm like, hey, so that, there's multiple avenues for us to be able to support staff in that way.
Interesting. I'm learning a lot, too.
I just want to comment, I just have to say, you know, I'm excited about this, Partners in Education being absorbed underneath Ed Foundation. I'm more excited than I could have time to, to explain right now, but I do want to bring attention to, because a lot of times you have something like this happen, and it's like, oh, we got together one time, shook hands, and it was a done deal. This has been in the works for almost two years. I mean, you guys have been working hard at this because you saw the value of a community that is resource-rich, allocation-poor, existing. And so I, I just can't thank you enough for the Ed Foundation for taking this on, and I just want to commend Ms. Boyd for her tireless efforts to make sure this program continues. You guys have, I was actually a Partners in Education liaison for a short time and worked with Ms. Boyd at that time. I saw the work that she put in, and she knew what this program meant to this community. And so I just want to, I just want to say, I really appreciate and thank you for all of your work.
And we still want our liaisons to be liaisons for those because this work is so huge, what they're doing. It's, it needs its own voice and advocates on this school board, so we want to continue to educate. And you're such a champion. This could not have happened without you.
Yeah.
I love you.
Before you go, before you...
I have one.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm just answering.
Are you in partnership with the Junior League and their, and our paid project?
Yep. I deleted that slide, too.
Because we go and pack those kits.
Guess where we are? With information. She had all these slides ready to go, and I deleted them.
We are very appreciative for that program that we sponsor from the Junior League.
Yeah, they're a big help, so we appreciate that.
I will tell them at our meeting.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
You go ahead.
I just have a statement. You know, thanks for all you do, you know, looking over everything, and it's, it's great when the community can, or LCS can have an extension to help out with, with the needs and all that. I do have a question that I've had a few parents reach out and ask about. There are some parents that want to help their, their students, but it's been a little bit since they've been in school. So they're, they're looking for ways that they can kind of brush up on some of their academic material so they can, you know, be better at parenting and be supportive of their students. Are there any programs that you know of that I could pass along to parents?
Sure. So one of the other parts of my job, so the family engagement half goes through Title I, and I know Title I is very heavy on the instructional component when they have their Title I nights, literacy nights, STEAM nights. In, in any of my instructor people in the building, please correct me if I go too far left, but during those events, more times than not, parents are actually sent home with specific strategies and things that can help them bridge that gap with their student. Because I, I mean, letters and numbers have changed since I was in school. I didn't think that was possible. So I understand. You don't understand it, neither do I. So, but that's what Title I is for, is the educational component.
How often is Title I happen?
Every month.
Every month.
Well, so our elementary schools primarily, because those are the ones that fall under Title I, so they do theirs every month. But I do know our middle schools and high schools do family engagement events as well.
And where, where, where does this meeting place happen?
I believe that's posted on the schools count, like the individual schools' calendar website. So I don't know what days they fall, but I know they happen monthly.
But they just need to search Title I and go from there?
Or just reach out to their specific school, and they will tell them, hey, our next literacy night is, and they will have all that information for them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, these programs that you guys are presenting are so wonderful, but I'm thinking, what if you guys were not there to help facilitate? Could somebody kind of help me here? What would be the, would that be a void in the system?
Be a void.
A big void in the system? Wow. It's, it's great work.
We continue to say, and I, I don't mean to keep putting things on you, I just, you have such a champion with this person. Our, both of our boards, we have a PIE board and a LCS board, Education Foundation Board, and we sit there, when we talked about this for two years, and like, what happens if Whitney's not there? Because Whitney really is a champion, and there were champions before, and then you don't have a champion because they don't believe in it. So it is a void, and that's why we wanted to make it sustainable, because it shouldn't just stand on one person's shoulders. It should be a sustainable effort that had, but somebody leaves, don't leave, if somebody walks away, that, the infrastructure is there. But it's still, we still need to put that infrastructure in place, which is why we're really trying to make that happen. But yeah, it's a great question, and we're very aware of it.
Okay. Before you walk away from the podium, on behalf of Dr. Gupta, Board Chair in his absence, and myself, and I believe I speak for the entire board, hats off to what you're doing, and we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. We're best friends.
Okay, our next agenda item is a action item, Policy Work Group. And I believe most of these policies are updated by the O E. So. Policy Work Group.
So actually, you'll see there where it's saying for action, it's information tonight for your first read. We want you to take your time, go through it. If you have any questions about any of these policies, all of these have gone through, well, the majority of these have gone through the policy work groups. In some cases, if the work group did not meet, then the staff did go through and update all of those policies. But you have this opportunity over the next month to read these. It'll be for action next month, but please read through. You'll see the comments on the side, discussion notes. If you have any questions, please ask me, and we'll, we'll connect you to the various staff members who worked on those policies with the committees.
So a question?
Yes, ma'am.
When we click on them, will it show what's lined out or what was changed and things like that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, cool.
So if you click on that first one, for example, you'll see where it's highlighted for Chief Operations Officer. It's, let's see, which policy was it? It was EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan. And you'll see there where there's a strike through for Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Strategic Planning because we no longer have that position. But you'll see Chief Operations Officer. So you'll see the highlights and strike throughs throughout the documents for any changes. Yes, ma'am?
I do have one myself on the J F C M. Says insert the... Will we see the actual, says insert divisions restrictions for elementary here. Insert the...
Yes, so we'll, we'll get all of that information to you.
So we'll be able to look at this policy and see what each individual...
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
That was the only one I had a question on.
So yes, that work group will go back and, and fix that and then send an email back out to you all.
Work to do, School Board. Work to do.
Oh, yeah, always.
School Board Member Reports. Governor's School, Ms. Lowry.
Okidok. In, we are in the process of hiring a new director that can also teach a class for budget reasons for twenty-six, 2026 and on. Steve Smith will be retiring after this year. So, yeah, that's all we have for now. Right now, we're, it's just different meetings and stuff. Hopefully by November, early November, we'll have an answer.
Or Regional School Representative, Ms. Lowry.
Okay, the paper I passed out to you was from our last regional meeting. It was a pamphlet, but I, at home, I just printed off two sheets. So anyways, the financial report reveals a good standing, but still waiting on auditors, correct? But so, and...
We're almost complete.
Yep, and so Ms. James did a nice job on that. There are forty-four students there, combined from Amherst, Maddox, Bedford, Campbell, and Lynchburg. The theme is Every Step Counts. They filled two visual impaired teaching positions this year, which we needed last year, but we didn't get. So that was filled. We still need two more special education teachers. And Mrs. Ashley Burks present, covered the House bills that came down that affect the SED students and, and that we're meeting them. So she did a very nice job. Thank you for that, Ms. Burks. And I think that's how, all I have on Laura.
Okay, Accelerate STEM Academy, Mr. Poe.
Yeah, so pretty much, the STEM Academy is, is off to a, a good start. Pretty much, much has not changed since the last report. For those that, you know, may be interested in possibly, you know, the application process, basically, there's a timeline for it. School Promotions, STEM Academy application is due by March 1st of each year. All applicants are read and evaluated using the application Rubik, Rubik by the STEM Academy Director and the School Division. Let's see here. Sorry, my, uh... Let me bring it up on my other computer. This one is not working as it should. Bear with me a second. They're notified and offered admission. There could be a waiting list, or they could be denied by the fourth week in March. This information is also shared with school counselors and so forth. And we will meet again in October, and I will let everybody know what else is going on with the STEM Academy.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. DePaul is on vacation, so we're going to skip to Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations. Mr. Jalil?
We have had our last meeting and designated a number of tasks, considering whether or not we're going to do a breakfast and follow-up with bills, and we'll present anything to the board that comes up. Our next meeting is the next month.
Thank you. Academic Success, Ms. Lowry.
Okay, our next meeting is next week. Kelly Knapp, who presented tonight, will also be coming and sharing those education programs with the Academic Success Committee. Tomorrow at EC Glass Legacy with Mr. Dutton will be... Tomorrow at EC Glass Legacy with Mr. Dutton will be presenting to the whole body of Centennial what they offer in the workforce for students with our CTE, and I just say, I want to say with our CTE Beacon of Hope, and all working together with the students as the focus and their success after school is over is so beautiful, because not one entity can do all of it. So I'm thankful for all three of them, you know, having these avenues for kids to come together. And it just benefits them as they are leaving school to, because as School Board Members, I feel like our responsibility is to help these children be viable citizens of the city they're gonna live in. So, so yeah, that, the, we will be meeting tomorrow.
Can we ask for a quick update on the other committee, the, um?
That's at the bottom.
Okay.
Isn't that at the bottom?
Yes, okay. Partners in Education, which we just had a big review, so Dr., Mr. Eileen or Dr. Farmer?
We are so proud of this act of love and support from one of our own departments, Dawn and Whitney, who stole my thunder. The social media asked for uniforms and supplies for Marvin Bass transfer students because the schools did not have them to give. The situation was taken care of by one of our awesome programs, Tools for School and Classroom. For those who do not know, they can order online or come in person. They're located at thirty-five twenty-five John Karen Road, the LCS Maintenance Facility. They have a two-minute video to view the warehouse, Board Members, talking to Tracy Baker and Dawn, the Director of Operations. She invited us, the Board Members, to come out for a tour. The uniforms and supplies were furnished by Tools for School from a contribution from a former citizen and product of Lynchburg City Schools. Talking to the Principal Monica Hendricks and toured the rooms myself with these two eyes. The supplies and uniforms were outstanding. The solution was taken care of by a LCS program in place. Whitney and Dawn and, let me, don't, I won't leave nobody out now, Tracy Baker. They did an awesome job, awesome. And see, that's why you have to be kind of careful when you go out there and look on that social media, because everything out there is not accurate. But I do my research. That's why I get in so much trouble. And we got more, but we're gonna go the right steps with the protocol. We get parents, we get grandparents, we get community leaders. But Reverend Eileen and I, we're going to take it through the right channels.
All right.
Okay, but we'll keep you informed.
Hey, I got you again for the Ed Foundation, or is that included in that report you just gave?
That's included.
Okay.
Okay.
Beacon of Hope, Mr. Barron or Mr. Pope?
Yep.
All right, now recap.
All right. What is it Beacon of Hope doing? I was out at the Miller Park, Day in the Park this Saturday. They were there representing, they seem to be everywhere. But here's some specific things that I'm excited to share with you. Of course, SAT ACT season, my son just took the SAT test on Saturday. They're doing SAT prep. They have over two hundred students enrolled at Heritage and EC Glass already in this program to help them boost their college readiness and confidence and expand their college options. They're also doing campus visits, so taking students to see Randolph College and the University of Lynchburg this month. Of course, this gives them hands-on exposure to college campuses, and again, available at both high schools. This one I'm really excited about. They have, we'll call it hashtag Future Fridays, so I'm consistent with what she sent me, at EC Glass. And in partnership with Central Health, we are giving students a firsthand look at how classroom learning connects to real-world careers. This is fantastic. These sessions create valuable exposure to career opportunities and pathways, helping students see the link between their academic subjects and the local employers. We will have a new partner each month. So I think that's an incredible program, and I'm really glad that they're doing that. Of course, the Stay Close, Go Far Scholarship, some, some numbers to throw at you. They have six hundred and four LCS graduates enrolled in college this fall. And listen to this, seventy-six percent are enrolled locally. That's huge. Through these programs, students have access to not only critical financial support, but also to the wraparound services provided by our Office of College and Career Success. Throughout the year, our team will connect students with academic resources, career coaching, and internship opportunities. And then finally, just wrap it up with Promise Pals. They have forty-six scholars serving as Promise Pals to Heritage and Paramount Elementary Schools. In this role, they serve as pen pals to a designated classroom throughout the year. And the goal here is to give elementary students the chance to connect with LCS alumni who once sat in their same seat, and to inspire them to begin dreaming about their own futures.
Nice.
Like I said, doing a lot, but it's very exciting. I'm very proud of this organization. Anything to add, Mr. Pope?
Uh, Nelson, I think you've covered pretty much all of it, but as some of us, I just wanted to highlight the corporate breakfast that they had.
Oh, yes.
Where we got to hear a very powerful story from one of the students that, you know, went through Beacon of, Beacon of Hope. And so for any community parents out there, I definitely advise you to visit their website and see if any of the programs that they have to offer is something that can help your, your child. They really got a lot of good things going on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Looks like I'm on the agenda. Student Discipline Committee Report. I don't get the exciting. To talk about. Well, one thing, we do have some improvement. For up through the tenth of September, we are seven percent lower in total referrals than last year, thirty-five total for all the schools. This time last year, we had five hundred and seven total referrals, and this time, this year, we only had four hundred and seventy-two. So we're showing some improvement in the reduction of referrals. And the big thing was that I was, I'm happy with is, last year, the number-one referral was possession or use of portable communication device in violation of school policy. We had seventy-six. This year, we had thirty-four. So a huge increase in, in the reduction of, um.
Cell phone.
The use of, cellphone use. So we look forward to next month to see, continue to see if we keep a seven percent decrease, I think we'll have a pretty good year in improving discipline overall. And then finally, the Ad Hoc Achievement Gap Committee.
Okay, so we are extending through October to tackle one subject area at a time to focus on, to bring to the Board a few areas. We got off task and off track of what we were supposed to be focusing on, answering different kind of things, so we've decided to focus on one subject area at a time. We, as a group, will work on it, those who can attend, now that we extended it. And also, we'll be thinking, what will benefit the student's success? So there will be a report at the end of October for the Board.
That point, Superintendent.
All right, well, good evening again. I'm gonna make a few remarks, and then the video will play after I'm done. It will play. So again, good evening, School Board Members, community. I know we have a lot that watch online, so I wanted to throw this out here. I want to begin tonight by sharing the exciting announcement. Intuit, in partnership with Lynchburg Beacon of Hope, we've heard about them earlier, is donating a fully operational food truck to our School Division. It got here today, so a few people had a sneak peek. This program will give our CTE students real-world experience in culinary arts, business, entrepreneurship, and much more. Under the direction of Mr. Robbie Dooley, the food truck will make its debut during a special tailgate celebration before the Jug Bowl on Friday, this Friday, September nineteenth, at one PM at the Lynchburg City Stadium. I know some of you have RSVP'd. If others can attend, that would be fantastic. Our students will unveil the truck's student-designed branding, and guests will be able to tour the truck as they arrive. Then I invite you to come back around Friday night for Jug Bowl. Our game time is seven PM. You'll see EC Glass and Heritage face off to determine our citywide champion. So that should be exciting. And I want to thank you for your comments earlier. I prepared my comments, and we hadn't had, we didn't even communicate about this. But just thinking, as I, as I navigate this and, and learn and grow, I just had a few thoughts. So we are in a season of growth and change as a School Division. Growth in the areas where it's necessary, and then enhancement of all those things that are already good, right? For our school. So I am thankful, again, for the opportunity to serve and learn and grow alongside my team, this faculty and staff. I, I'm telling you, this crew in here is a hard-working crew. They truly inspire me each and every day. I also appreciate our community partners, like LCS Funda-, Ed Foundation, Beacon of Hope, and many, many others, who continue to pour into and support our students, faculty, and staff. Like you said, Mr. Eileen, what would happen if we didn't have them? We desperately need them, and I'm thankful that they're able to fill in that gap for us. But I will say this, as we continue towards our vision of the tradition of excellence, I want us to, I want to challenge and present a challenge, and encourage all of us to focus on the process, the process, our systems, how we do the work, our progress, and what we want our outcomes to be. Where do we want our students to be? What are the outcomes that we're striving for? While input and effort, they're important, but the main thing is, what is the work that we're doing to get to the outcome where we want to go? Because I can speak into something, but my works is what's gonna help us, move us to that finish line of where we want our students to be. So I just say, with that focus in mind, as always, I appreciate the feedback of the Board. Good, bad, and indifferent, it helps me grow. It helps me grow. But with that continued support from our staff, the Board, our community partners, I'm confident that we'll continue to move forward. This team has accomplished a lot in a very short window of time. They will tell you, I always tell them my questions have questions. We continue to grow and stretch together, because we want to make sure that we are providing the ultimate level of support to schools, so that principals and teachers can do their jobs to better support kids, because they're there on the front lines. But our job is to support. So it's always interesting to me when I have staff to say, well, I report to you. I get it, when you think about an org chart, but I still look at it, my job is to serve the pleasure of the Board within policy and law, I always say that. But my job really is to, to provide leadership and to serve the faculty and staff so that they can do what they need to do to serve kids. So I just wanted to put that out there. Those are just my comments tonight. We didn't talk, but, but, but thank you for your comments earlier. And that's it for me.
All right, Board Comments, I'm gonna start on this side with Mr. Pope, Dr. Farmer, Jalil, and we'll work around.
Just, um, I, I'll piggyback off with, with Dr. Majette had to say. I, I really think, you know, I just want to recognize the hard work that LCS Administration and the staff has, you know, really rolled up their sleeves. You know, growing up and being homegrown right here in Lynchburg, I know there have been some, you know, some worries and some troublesome mannerisms and thoughts. But, you know, I, I think it's headed in the right direction, and I appreciate everybody's hard work. You know, even, you know, on the Board and the late nights and the disciplinary committee, and, and I'm sure all the other committees, and, you know, I appreciate the information and, you know, this, this position is one of those, you gotta kind of jump right into it. There's really no, no training besides your, you know, whatever you've learned before you gotten into this position. But you gotta kind of learn on the job, is from a Board Member perspective. And, you know, I'm happy to be here, happy to help, and I just want to let it be known that I'm willing to continue to learn and keep asking questions, and I'm looking forward to what the rest of the year will bring. Dr. Farmer?
Oh, me, my turn. I'm thankful for the challenges, because challenges make you stronger. And I love each and every one of you, and there's nothing you can do about it. We got a lot of work to do. It's not gonna be accomplished overnight. That's what I tell the people that's bringing me all these concerns. And then I put it back on them. What is your solution? And half of them, they don't, they wasn't expecting that. But like I tell my partner, he's my partner, whether he knows it or not, we are a team. And we're not gonna always agree, but we can disagree in love. And we can move forward through communication, protocol, respect, but most of all, trust. And we got to bring back the trust. That's all I got to say, and I'm sticking to it.
Very nice. Board Members, commendations go to all LCS who has honored nine-one-one. It's very important to remember every single year, never forget. The Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services is holding a twenty-twenty-five Threat Assessment Regional Forum here in Lynchburg on October twenty-first and twenty-second at the Liberty Mountain Conference Center, Building Safer Communities Behavioral Threat Assessment in K through twelve, Higher Education and Beyond. So that includes all of us, and they are asking a number of different types of community members to come, and we're included in that, so if you'd like to go, feel free to attend. Secondly, it is Suicide Awareness Month, according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. So I wanted to bring that up and make sure that we are attentive to the subject, especially this month. Further, remember that one of our teachers warned us about testing overabundance. We don't want to forget that this is an issue that has come up. Just today, a teacher, I mean, a, a community member reminded us that, or informed us that onsite professional trainers for middle school football games would be very important, so let's remember that. It's Constitution Week, and tomorrow is Constitution Day. I hope our teachers make much ado about our beloved founding documents. I would like the Board to consider the issue soon about adding disclaimers to the Constitution and Declaration of Independence documents specifically. This action seems to be offending more and more civic-minded adults who ask me why every year it's required. And now a military veterans group has caught wind of it and expects to hear back whether the Board supports the disclaiming of these particular documents. Not everything that is in Lynchburg City Schools, just these documents. And finally, not every speech controversy is the same. There are matters of policy debate that we mentioned here today, because we have a policy for it, and there are matters for or against public opinions. But the celebration of deaths, whether in the news, locally, or nationally, is something that is different than falls under the free speech allowances. It's not arguing a policy or stance, it's not debating an idea, but glorifying death like Hamas is something that is atrocious, should not be acceptable in any vocation or organization. The subjects of liberty, taxation, the rule of law are all issues you can debate about for or against, ideas which have been battled for a long time. It's speech going back and forth in pursuit of truth. But being glad that Charlie Kirk was assassinated is beyond the pale. There is a saying that, out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. That's a description of character. So when you have that as something you promote, share, distribute on purpose, it reveals a character that loses public trust. It loses trust from the general public and also people around you. So it should be pointed out. So it should be pointed out and if it's the case, should not be forgotten. And I have no recommendations as to any outcomes of that, except that it should be known. And if it's known, then the public can at least make an up, formed opinion about it. If it's hidden, it's not good. We must have accountability for the mocking of life itself because we don't want to cover the things that are important to the local, to LCS and the community around it. And we don't want to act like we allow the same things that cults and nations who hate other nations do and act like. So we want to make sure we raise children of a certain type. And that's not it. We want good citizens, we want them to thrive in communities, not partisans. Liberty without virtue will lead to our self-destruction. So let's not allow this type of celebration to go unchecked or unmentioned. It's not a crime, but it's not acceptable to parents or society at large. And it's absolutely unacceptable to celebrate people's death.
Thank you, Mrs. Jalil.
Um, I have been visiting schools and enjoying all the conversations and honoring because our chair, so everybody knows our chair told us to visit all the schools. So, um, first two weeks of every month, I'll see every school and so you'll see me nine times. But, um, I'm enjoying the conversations, um, seeing students hard at work, the cafeteria, sta- um, staff prepping for lunches, custodians, keeping things clean, secretaries, TAs, behavior specialists, librarians, and so many others, just doing a great job for the students. So, um, um, I have worked out the visitation plan like I just said, but I just really want to be an encouragement and a smile to them. And I know that many principals have told me they love your principal meetings, that it is, they're so encouraging and they've just loved it as long as, as well as our city council who also enjoyed, so, so yeah, it was very nice.
Here today, as I sit, you know, and listen to all the solid programs that we have in the city, uh, it shows that we have a solid infrastructure that is able now to be in place. And as I look at it, I see the next journey now is to empower the superintendent so that she and her team can do their job to get us to where we need to go. And I'm a little concerned because, you know, as I, sometimes I look at emails and all that stuff and there's so much stuff that is coming through to her and a lot of non-essential issues that she's probably having to grapple with and to deal with. And I, I just don't want her to get sort of knocked off track and, and just sort of lose focus with all these, you know, rabbit trails that sometimes are coming up. So I'm just gonna encourage the board along with myself. You know, again, we got a good infrastructure with the programs and the partnerships and so on. Let's see if we can support her, empower her, and get her to the next level where the kids are gonna get the benefits. So all that we're trying to do. Cause if, if we don't reach that level where the kids are benefiting, then we just, to me, wasting a whole lot of time. So I, I'm for what we are doing here in terms of the programs, but I want to get us to the level where we can empower the superintendent and her team to be able to get this job done. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Eileen. Mr. Barron?
Well, I'm still very much, I'm learning a lot. I came into this with the intent to listen and learn, as I know you, you came in with the same sentiments and I've appreciated that. Uh, but there were three areas that I just, I said, I felt that were specifically, uh, part of why I'm here and what I want to help cultivate and that's trust, transition, and transportation. So I just want to speak to us very quickly. Uh, and I'll start with transition, cause Dr. Majette already talked about this and I just want to echo her sentiments. That man, transition is just a different movement. You move different when you're in transition and that's transition with different leadership in place on the school board, different people in leadership, uh, at the, you know, from the top down. You just move different, takes patience, but it also takes making quick decisions, uh, and, and being able to turn on a dime. And so I just want to recognize that we're in that space of transition and, uh, there's a lot of grace needed, but I'm also really proud of the progress that we're making as we go. The second is just that, that trust. When I first, uh, started talking to community members about, you know, perceptions of LCS over the last two years ago that I started talking and asking these questions, trust was one that was on a, on a list. There's just gaps, let's just acknowledge that, right? That's not, we can't do anything about it, we've, if we ignore it, it doesn't go away, right? So we're just gonna acknowledge that and say, hey, we got some gaps in trust, uh, across the board. And, um, I'll, I want to help create a culture where we, uh, a culture, I'll just call it a culture of truth and trust. So one, we're always going to seek and speak truth, no matter what. And two, we're gonna default trust. This is not normal, this is not a typical way for people to act. Normally, we, we say trust has to be earned, but I'm telling you, something changes in a culture when you default, assign somebody trust. What if we believe the best about our leadership? What if we believe the best about our teachers? What if we believe the best about our parents, the best about our students? That does something to a culture and I'm telling you, that is the kind of framework that we need and we want to be able to build, uh, and do the things that we're talking about achieving. Uh, and so then the last, I just want to speak to transportation. I'm gonna bring transportation until I get an audible groan from everybody every time I say something about it, okay? Cause here's the reality, I really believe transportation solutions are achievement gap solutions. And more than you realize, more than most people realize. We're talking about addressing truancy, you're talking about, uh, these are the people that have the first contact with students during the day and last contact when you send them home. I mean, you talk about being able to build trust and rapport and, and, and when we don't have adequate personnel to, to transport these students, there's mistrust that, you talk about trust, right? There's trust gaps that develop, it's just creates a huge, uh, barrier, um, that's unnecessary. Cause really truly, the solution is, we need drivers. And so I just want anybody who's listening, anybody who is willing to go out there and put this on blast, we need drivers. And I'm, I'm looking at every HR report, seems like we're losing drivers. Another one on this HR report that we talked about today, uh, we're losing drivers and we need more. And so I'm, I've had this conversation with many people, I'm gonna, I'll put it in public. I think there's two groups of people that really can do something about this. And I, I want to call out church staff and entrepreneurs. You have some flexible schedule, you make your own schedule, get up early and drive a bus. You have no idea, and it don't have to be every day. You can give them three days a week, they'll take it. And just go and drive a bus. It can make a huge difference. And we're talking about right now, our Transportation Department, every single person in the office, every mechanic is driving a bus. So they're doing double duty. Any given day, you'll go by there, there, there's, there's one person in the office on dispatch and everybody else is driving a bus. Guys, there's too many people in this town that have a, a ability to do something about this for, for me to not say something. So I'm gonna continue to say that, beat that drum till we have too many bus drivers, okay? Um, that's my goal. So thank you all very much for just giving me the opportunity to speak to that.
Thank you. Before we go into our next agenda item, do, can we? It's turned off now.
No, I think it's still on.
It's ready.
Okay, we'd like to, I'm so excited to watch this video. We're gonna watch this video.
When I was ready, it wasn't ready. But then when I was ready.
Thank you. It was a great, it's a great to remember. Not a great thing that happened, but it's great to remember. You know, famous quote was, if we don't remember the past, we're doomed to repeat it. And I might, I might be paraphrasing it, but it's pretty close, so we need to remember. It was, I think everybody that in this room remembers exactly what they were doing that morning and, you know, I just want to thank God for the heroes that went up the stairs when everybody else was coming down. What a, you know, great thing. So, um, we're, our next agenda item is closed session. The board chair recommends that the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by the Virginia Code 2 dot 2, 3711 A1, the discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of personnel. I have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Dr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
C.
Motion carries.
We're in, we'll be in 206 and then we'll be back to come out of closed session.